All right, I have I have seven o'clock, so the meeting will come to order. All right, good evening, everyone. Today's April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, and this is Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Dorian, may we have a roll call, please?
President who?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Brooke? Alternate Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Miranda?
Present.
Commissioner Quinones? Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stuck?
Here.
Commissioner K. Seven?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
And Commissioner Whitehurst?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure Commissioner Brooke is on? No, I guess not.
I don't see her.
Okay. All right, so maybe she would join us. All right, thank you, Dorian. So next item is communications commissioners. Do have you attended any meetings or received any communications since our last meeting that you would like to report to the planning commission? I see none. Okay, so let's move on to consideration of minutes. So during email everyone revised version earlier today. Thank you, Dorian. Does anyone have any correction, addition deletions that you would like to submit? I see none, so I will I declared a minutes approved and I will sign a sign the copy to Dorian.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let's move on to our main items of the evening. I will open the legislative hearing in case in our case for so the city of Tiger has proposed an update to its housing needs analysis that is required under state laws and regulations and the analysis also include amendment to our cities comprehensive plans and our community development codes. So before I started hearing, I just want the member of public to know that if you would like to submit any testimony in relation to this legislative legislative hearing. The calling number is five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Again, it's five zero three nine six six four one zero one. And since this is a legislative hearing, we will jump right into the staff report. And today we will have a presentation by senior planner Skylar Warren. Skylar, good evening.
Good evening, President Who and Commissioners. My name is Skylar Warren. I'm a senior planner in the Department of Community Development. In tonight's hearing, the planning commission is being asked to consider making a recommendation to council to adopt an updated housing needs analysis. A housing needs analysis, a little background on that. It's a required element of a city's comprehensive plan that addresses the requirements of statewide planning goal ten and OAR division six sixty. It provides key information related to the city's ability to house its current and future residents and analysis of the city's buildable land supply and its population forecast. Together, those two items demonstrate whether the city has a surplus or deficit of land for housing. Housing needs analysis is also informed by a variety of demographic data that demonstrates the housing needs among different parts of the community. And it also looks at some qualitative factors in determining housing needs, including stakeholder input and interviews. So there are a few reasons why the time is right for the city to look at updating its housing needs analysis right now. City last adopted an updated housing needs analysis almost eight years prior to the day in twenty thirteen. The intervening years have seen a pretty dramatic change in housing supply and need across the city and the region and the state. Housing supply is at record lows. I'm sure you're all aware of that. While prices continue to soar and economic displacement threatens the region's residents. In response to the historic need, both the city and the state legislature have enacted housing reform measures that have shifted somewhat the housing landscape. And then finally, an updated housing needs analysis is an important criterion in the consideration of urban growth boundary expansions, which you will also be hearing about later in the evening. The previous analysis was outdated and would not meet the requirements for UGB expansion. So with all of these factors and with new funding opportunities provided by House Bill two thousand and three, staff undertook an update to the housing needs analysis as a corollary project to the planning for River Terrace two point oh. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant Melissa Mayu of Mosaic Community Planning, who will be presenting to you about the findings and recommendations in the updated housing needs analysis. And Melissa, welcome.
Thanks, Skylar. I will start by sharing a presentation that we have. Looks like that's working. Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I really appreciate the chance to share what we've been working on for the city's housing needs analysis. Skylar gave a little bit of a background as far as the regulatory components that are in an H and A. But a little bit of an overview of kind of what the structure of that report is, what were the key questions we were looking at? Essentially, we were studying what type of housing does Tiger have now? Thinking about its projected population growth into the future, what types of housing does the city need? How much more housing does the city need? And finally, kind of putting those two together, how can Tiger plan to meet that need over the next twenty years? So that was the timeline for this analysis. It was looking out through twenty forty. Also, as Skylar mentioned, a key component of this was community engagement. So making sure that we hear from residents and that the needs that we'll be discussing in the H and A reflect their experiences in the city. One of the key components to our community engagement for this project was a community advisory committee that met five times beginning in October of last year and then through the spring of this year. And those meetings really we talked about kind of those three key questions that I just mentioned. We were looking at what do people see as far as housing here now and what would they like it to look like in the future? How does it make sense for the city to get get to that point? Those meetings included, they all included Spanish translation and interpretation. And there were members of the CAC that spoke Spanish. So I think the city did a great job there to be intentional that its outreach included speakers of different languages, folks of different ethnicities on that CAC. We also had a public survey that was open online from November to December of last year, which received about one hundred and thirty nine responses. And we held a Spanish language focus group to hear about housing needs specifically from the Spanish speaking community. And finally, did some interviews with housing developers, including developers of affordable housing and middle housing. So that was some of the background that went into this in addition to our data analysis. I'm going to start by taking the first of those three questions and kind of give a quick overview of what types of housing Tiger has now. So about sixty percent of the city is single family houses, which is a pretty similar share to Washington County and slightly lower than the Portland MSA. Multi-family housing, so here we're thinking about buildings with five or more units make up about twenty five percent of the city, which is also similar to the county. Row houses, so attached, single family units make up about eight percent. And some of those considerably smaller multi-family buildings duplex, triplex, quads, those make up about seven percent. And really across the board, those are similar numbers to Washington County. I think what is interesting is that looking at housing development data over the past ten years, particularly on the for sale side, the city had less diverse supply in terms of housing types. So eighty four percent of for sale housing built over the last ten years with single family homes. And that number was a little lower in the county. So you can see that there may be some opportunity for Tiger to diversify in terms of housing type. And this project also considered middle housing types, so things like duplex, triplex, quads, cottage housing, row houses, some types of housing that might not be very available in Tiger now, or if they are here, might be relatively rare. So that was a key theme that we looked at throughout this project. I think one of the most important things that we looked at was around price. What is the in or what is the cost to get into housing here? First, looking at the for sale market, the median sales price over the last five years was about four hundred and nine thousand. And that is above the metro and county medians. Those were both in like three seventy, three eighty. So housing here is a little bit more expensive. We also saw through research that the price of a home is heavily impacted by its size. So that was another consideration that we took. I think particularly maybe in conjunction with some of those needs for middle housing. We might be able to increase the supply of more affordable homes just by focusing on smaller housing. So that was something that the data showed there. As Skylar mentioned, there is also highly constrained supply. It's true in the for sale and the rental market, but we saw it particularly on the for sale side that there's very little vacancy and not much supply. I think particularly heard that for first time home buyers or folks who might be looking for something on the lower end of the price scale that that's becoming harder to find. And for sale housing makes up about sixty percent of Tiger. Rental housing is about forty. And those ratios are really similar in the metro and the county as well. Looking on the rental market, you can see that the average rent here is about one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, which is a little bit higher than the county, but not significant differences there in terms of rental rates. But what you can see is shown in that graph that over the past five years or so, rent rates have increased well above inflation. So it's getting more expensive to rent housing here. Like on the for sale side, pretty low vacancies. So that's one of the factors that's kind of fueling those increases in rents. Thinking about what types of housing does Tiger need? These were some of the themes that we saw both from hearing from the public, but also from looking at data. The first is related to affordability. So we heard this really strongly from the community advisory committee and in survey results as well. But just looking at data, we could see that about four out of five households in Tiger with incomes under about fifty five thousand are have unaffordable housing. They're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. So I think that was a considerable need that we heard throughout this project. We also heard about the importance of variety of types of housing. So on the rental side, on the owner's side, having different forms, whether that's row houses, duplexes, triplexes, multi-family, whether that's apartments or condominium type ownership, that there are a lot of different household types here, and they're all going to have different things that they're looking for in a place to live. We also heard, I think particularly from the advisory committee, that housing that's walkable and accessible to resources is important. And finally, that there's a real need to be equitable and to make sure that as we're planning for the future, we're planning for all family types, all income levels, people who speak different languages, that whatever housing is built here is going to be accessible for folks. Quick overview of some of the things that we heard from this survey. So we started by asking folks to identify how strongly they agree with two key statements. And the first was about Tiger's, the variety of housing in terms of type and price here. The second was about whether lack of affordable housing is an issue. And you can see that in both cases, about sixty percent of respondents somewhat agreed or strongly agreed with those statements. So I think that we could see from the public that there is a sense that we need more variety here and we need more affordability. This survey also asked some questions about preferences that people have in terms of housing. The first was about tenure and overwhelmingly there was a preference for homeownership, which I believe is somewhat influenced by the fact that the majority of folks that took the survey were homeowners now. So you saw them wanting to continue with homeownership. But even some of the renters that participated identified that they would rather own their homes. In terms of features that people are looking for, these listed here were all selected by sixty percent more of the or more of the people that took the survey as either extremely important or very important. So things like safety, having access to off street parking, the size of their home, being near, having a yard or being near natural features or parks, trails, access to the outdoors were important. You also see on that list and the number one thing in that graph, that price or cost is a big factor in terms of where people choose to live. So that was the number one factor by far in terms of what makes it difficult to find housing here. The second being kind of like I mentioned earlier, not enough housing for sale. From the community advisory committee, these were a few of the comments that we had that stood out to me. I think that particularly kind of embodied a lot of what the advisory committee talked about, that a lot of new construction is larger homes. We would love to see some smaller housing available. That there need to be some models that help maintain affordability for long term. So maybe some new models that the city hasn't tried before, things like land trusts or co-ops. Reflecting what we heard in that survey, that access to green space and being able to walk is really important, being able to walk places. And then finally, that there are some great opportunities for higher density and more apartments, particularly in downtown and the Tiger Triangle. And I think one of the biggest overarching themes that we heard from the CAC was really that they want to live up to the equity goals that they were talking about, that the city was talking about and really providing housing for all. That that's not going to happen just in the market, that the city is going to need some policies that help to realize that vision. Then finally, from the data, so this is twenty year housing projections based on anticipated household growth in the city. So through twenty forty, there would be demand for new housing units for about seven thousand four hundred, based on the projected household growth here. Then looking at the city's buildable lands and based on past developments, those density levels, how much capacity does the city have for housing? We estimated about forty two hundred housing units capacity for that many units. So you can see that that leaves a pretty big deficit of about thirty two hundred units over the twenty year period. And in terms of responses that the city can consider, so continuing to encourage more infill housing, particularly for a middle, middle and affordable housing types. And we'll talk about some strategies for that. But also expanding the UGB to add more land and increase housing capacity that way. And I think both of the, that's probably not an either or situation. Both of those will be important over the next twenty years to accommodate the growth that's expected. So turning to that, thinking of some of the policies that Tiger could enact to achieve housing goals. Before we get into those, I wanted to share a little bit of what we heard from the development community. So we did interviews with affordable and middle housing developers and market rate developers as well. And one of the things that we particularly heard that was helpful in getting affordable housing is fee waivers and tax exemptions. And we heard from developers that Tiger has already made positive steps to reducing their fees. The city has fee waivers for housing that's affordable, tax exemptions for nonprofit affordable housing providers. And the folks we talked to recognized and appreciated those those efforts. They also noted that there might be some opportunity to expand that those fee waivers, particularly maybe fees that are not necessarily charged by the city. But for example, county fees, if there was kind of a partnership where the county could reduce some of those fees, that would be helpful. They also talked about opportunities to structure some of those fees by housing type and size. So rather than paying a you know, one size fits all for a single family home, it could be varied where you're paying a higher fee if you're building a larger home. That way, there'd be some incentive for or some benefit for developers of smaller housing. Let's see. Affordable housing developers particularly talked about land availability as a hurdle that they have to deal with sometimes. I think particularly in that for an affordable housing developer, it takes longer to put together their financing that they're going to use for a project. So whereas a market rate developer might be able to jump on a piece of property more quickly, an affordable housing developer is not going to be able to take a risk to buy a property if they don't know that they have the financing for it yet. They haven't worked that part out. So I think they particularly look for opportunities to work with through land banks, through property that's held by public agencies or nonprofit organizations like churches that sometimes have a piece of property. Those are types of things that would be helpful for them. Let's see. In terms of zoning, they talked about some opportunity for incentive zoning where developers would get some relaxation in terms of zoning code, provided that they are building some share of their development as affordable housing. Absent that, even just having strong affordability goals or requirements in some development areas were things that they noted. And then lastly, particularly thinking about middle housing types. We talked with Habitat for Humanity and Proud Grounds, who often collaborates on building affordable for sale middle housing. So maybe Habitat for Humanity would build townhomes on a piece of property and Proud Grounds would work with those owners so that the land stays in a community land trust. The owners would own the units, but when they go to sell them, there would be some regulations that ensured that those units maintain affordability. So they're sold again at an affordable rate. So I think that was a particular opportunity that we saw in terms of middle housing types. For a lot of tax credit developers, which is a big share of affordable housing development, it's difficult to get down to those smaller projects that would be middle housing. They generally work three to four story apartments, just because that gets them the number of units that work best with tax credit rules. So those were some considerations we took into account as developing strategies. So there are several housing strategies that are included in the H and A. I'll go over a few now, but certainly take a look at that document to see the wider list. The first land banking kind of goes back to that idea of that land is a big part of putting together that package for affordable housing, being able to access land. So that could be for affordable rental development or tax credit developer or some other organization that's going to do rental housing or homeownership housing, kind of like I mentioned, through Habitat for Humanity or another organization like that. The community land trust model is also something that I think would be a good strategy for Tiger. So working with an organization to ensure that for sale housing is able to remain affordable kind of in perpetuity. And also another strategy that we discussed was the targeted use of affordable housing funds in key development areas. So that might be something like specific, we're going to use X amount of our affordable housing dollars in River Terrace or maybe in another redevelopment area throughout the city. So really targeting that funding in places where you know housing is going to be built so that you can have the affordable housing kind of built from the ground level rather than trying to go back into an area that's already been developed and add some affordability there. See, a few other strategies. We talked about zoning incentives or possible lending programs for affordable and middle housing. I think particularly from middle housing, one of the things that we know is it can be harder to get financing simply because a lot of those housing types are new. So lenders are less familiar with them and less likely to take a risk on them. So if the city worked with a partner to have a lending program that was going to provide some gap financing for middle housing types, that was one possibility that we talked about. We also talked about system development charges based on home size. So kind of going back to that idea that some developers noted that you can tier those charges so that's larger, larger market rate housing is paying a higher cost per square foot than smaller housing units. And again, for affordable housing, those would be waived. So even larger affordable units would still have that waiver. We also talked about pre permitted models. So this is something that the city of Portland has had some success with. They had wanted to develop some new housing types, particularly in maybe some hard to build areas. So they had some lots that were very long and thin and were having trouble getting development there. So they had a contest where architects submitted different plans and the winning plans were pre permitted by the city. So kind of fast tracked development of them. And you can see in that picture there, one of the winning designs and kind of the housing that was built using it. So that might be a strategy for Tiger, particularly for housing that the city wants to promote. So I think the example we talked about was if you were to think about, maybe the city would like to see more quads built. So is there something like this where the city could have some pre permitted models of quads that architects have submitted? Then a few other strategies. So one of the things that I think is important and will be important going forward is developer outreach to really attract the desired housing types that the city is looking for. is developer outreach to really attract the desired housing types that the city is looking for. Rather than just kind of having a reactionary approach or waiting to see what developers might be interested in, doing things like maybe looking at the state's allocation plan for low-income housing tax credits and seeing how could we sell ourselves to developers of those tax credits that, you know, this spot in Tigard is going to be competitive and attracts some developers here. And lastly, I think this goes back to the equity focus that we heard from the CIC. But to make sure that for all the different housing approaches that the city takes over the next twenty years, that there's affirmative marketing to make sure that it's reaching everyone in the community. So whether that means providing information to folks in different languages or maybe through different organizations, making a strategic effort to see that these opportunities are advertised widely, I think will be important going forward. So as Skylar said at the beginning, a key component of this project was updating the comprehensive plan. So you see in the HNA that there were edits to the comp plans, key findings, policies and action measures based on the HNA. And I think the key takeaways there that we'd want you to have is that there's a need for increased capacity to accommodate projected growth. Whether that's, that probably is both in terms of new land but also building capacity for higher density or middle housing types on existing land. That affordability is, it's a concern in the community now and it is going to continue to be a concern over the next twenty years. And I think kind of hands-in-hand with that is that a diverse housing mix is really what's going to best meet residents' needs, both in terms of price but also preferences for what they're looking for when they think of places to live. And then finally, that the market is not going to meet these needs on its own, that there's a need for proactive approaches by the city to achieve its goals. Let's see. And for each one of those strategies, you'll see that there's a comp plan policy that it falls within and then probably more a direct link to some of those action plan measures in the comp plan. So for example, the strategy related to land banking would fall under the policy that the city would continue to develop and dedicate, administer funding to support affordable housing for rental and homeownership. And really that action plan measure is pretty closely tied to the strategy that, so the city will support affordable housing development through land acquisition, development or participation in a land bank. One other example like that. So thinking of the strategy related to zoning incentives or lending programs, that would fall under that comp plan policy that the city is going to adopt and maintain policies, codes and standards that provide opportunities for a variety of housing types. So focusing here on affordable and middle housing. And the action plan measures that would really most directly relate to those strategies, so providing incentives to encourage affordable middle housing in low and median density residential areas. And then finally, providing incentives to encourage residential developers to incorporate affordable housing in their proposed developments. That's a couple examples, but certainly if you look at that HNA, there are a whole section with redlining for the comp plan policies and action measures that carry each one of those strategies out. Thank you very much. With that, I'll turn it over to Skylar from here.
Thank you, Melissa. So, you know, we are coming to Planning Commission as a legislative process. This is a complan amendment, so we are asking the Planning Commission for a recommendation to be made to City Council to adopt the updated housing needs analysis. And they will be hearing that recommendation on May twenty-third. So with that, I think we are available to take questions, comments. I'll also point out, I think Dorian sent out a memo to the group that included some fixes to Scrivener's errors that are in here. You may choose to, I guess, adopt with those fixes, but they are Scrivener's errors. We can also just include them in the council draft, so.
Thank you, Skylar and Melissa. So before I ask Commissioner if they have any questions in addition to the memo that Skylar, well, Dorian just sent out. Also, I noted that Commissioner Brooks joined the meeting before the commencement of the public hearing. And I think the agenda lists a development, a community development co-amendment number. So that's not, that's not a real number, right? Because we didn't make any changes to the development code.
That's correct. We had a placeholder for development code amendments. In the event that there were some development code amendments needed as part of this package, there were not, so we do not need the DCA number adopted.
Okay, so, so when I make the introduction, excuse my mistake for stating that there's amendment to the development code. And please disregard the DCA number for this case. All right, Commissioners, do we have any question for Skylar or Melissa? Commissioner Shook, please go ahead.
Hey there, good evening and thank you for your presentation. As I was listening to this presentation, I was thinking, and I haven't been on the Planning Commission very long, so I apologize, but I was thinking of a couple of recent applications that the Planning Commission, that have been before the Planning Commission. One particularly that was over on ninety-nine, but really all of them, there, there seems to be some resistance in the community when you bring in one of these denser projects or an apartment or a small mixed-use building. And one of the common themes is traffic. People are concerned about traffic in the area. So when you're on the Planning Commission, you know, we, we look at some of these projects and it's been recommended for approval by the staff on the city. And the engineer has acknowledged that, you know, it's, the streets can handle it or are able to accommodate the project. And I guess my question is, have you or has Melissa, in her work with other cities, is there a way to help manage or address some of those concerns with the public when they come up without just saying, no? And I think, you know, we, just recently, in the last few weeks, we've had a few of these. So that's one of my concerns is that you hear this and the commission wants to help to try to satisfy, to a certain extent, the neighbors. But there's tension there and I'm wondering if there's any thoughts that you can provide for us on how to manage that.
It's a really, it's a, it is a tension. You know, I think in terms of addressing it in the housing needs analysis, no, we did not really look into the, you know, transportation piece of it. But you will see in the two other briefings this evening, the way that traffic is thought about and that's going to be that River Terrace 2.0 concept plan as well as an update briefing on our transportation system plan. I guess what I would say, you know, because there's nothing I think I could point to in the housing needs analysis to address that concern. But in general, I think some of the same strategies that appear in the housing needs analysis and address housing need also end up addressing transportation issues indirectly. Because when you get, what, part of what drives vehicle miles traveled and the need for people to drive and cause congestion is a lack of destinations around them. And the reason there are a lack of destinations is there's just not enough rooftops. There's just not enough housing units around to support mixed-use buildings and that kind of thing. So it's a, it's a little bit of a all-in-one approach, if you will. I mean, by addressing one, hopefully you're helping to put in place the right conditions to address some of the issues that are perceived to come from it. But I think I would say more often, help to eventually alleviate some of the traffic. You know, once you have a more urbanized level of development, you're going to end up mitigating some of that.
Okay. Do you have any more questions? Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
So one thing that just jumped into my mind as I was reading, and I know there are a lot of data sources used for analysis like this, but it seemed a little bit of a shame that we didn't have the data from the 2020 census, which I know is still in process. I was just curious if there were any early indications or any feelings as far as if that data would cast any of this analysis in a different light.
I might let Melissa answer that one, she's a data expert.
Sure. So I guess it's hard to say, having not seen any of that data, but the census has done a good job of, so they used to just do every ten years, you'd have the census, and now they do, every year they're doing surveys so that we're able to have access to more updated data between the two years. So I think that we were able to take advantage of that of, and I think that data was from, what they do particularly in smaller cities is use a five-year average. So the data that we were using was from surveys from 2014 to 2018. So I think that that helps us to get more of a pulse on what's happening than kind of ten years ago, where you just wouldn't have data for ten years. But you're right, that it's, I don't know, it's almost painful to do these studies when you're like, I know in just a little bit more time, we're going to have that updated census data.
Okay, thank you. Partly I was just asking because 2020 was such a strange year, anyway.
That's true. So it may be that this data ends up being more reliable than some of the census data, depending on how that goes. But yeah, you're right, it was a strange year.
Thank you.
That's an understatement.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson, you have a question?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that a large portion of the population that is moving into Tigard are older and are aging. And I'm wondering if, if there's much focus on housing types that support aging populations. So, you know, single-story, it, that often doesn't, single-story doesn't, single-family homes and the like don't pencil that well, as far as I know. But, you know, are apartment buildings intended for, for aging populations? Are we encouraging, you know, assisted, developing assisted living-type facilities or, you know, those kind of transitional facilities for, for, you know, independent, older adults and that who may eventually need assisted living?
So I think with, you know, the, it's a great question. The best way probably that we have to encourage that is probably on the policy side, providing some sort of supports. You know, and you saw a great list that was generated there by Melissa. And then I would say the other thing is, you know, the way that we shape the development code and the way that we can sort of incentivize creation of those single-story units and providing trade-offs. And I would give the example of our cottage cluster code where we actually thought about zero-step units and we actually built the code to incentivize, you can get some larger cottages in there, provided that you provide units that are at a square footage that wouldn't make sense for a two-story unit. So it's those kind of things that, you know, we can provide incentives, that we would hope that the market would take advantage of those. But, you know, beyond that, I don't know right offhand what we could do to encourage more. I mean, certainly the demand is there. And we've done a number of other things on the policy side to kind of open up neighborhoods to, you know, assisted living and that kind of theme, group living. So that helps as well. But, you know, it's basically the combo of incentives and supports.
I'll just add, one of the things that I had mentioned was a possible outreach to tax credit developers. And the way that tax credit system is structured, they're for family properties or senior properties. So if the city wanted to go specifically for affordable senior properties, that might be one approach to.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any more questions? I see Commissioner Shook, I think he just hasn't lowered his hand yet. So Kealan, do we have any public calling in to provide testimonial?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, so, thank you. So at this time, unless we have more questions for Skylar or Melissa, I'm going to close public, public hearing and go right into deliberation. Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. Commissioners, it's time for deliberations. I would like, I would love to hear your feedback on this project. So, Commissioner Case Seven, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. It is a very well thought out and they've done a very good job, both of you. Thank you for doing such a detailed analysis. First, my first experience exposure to HNA, so this is very good for me. The thing still I'm struggling with is kind of what Commissioner Shook brought up, right? That we keep trying to bring these high-density places, but somehow we also try to narrow down the width of the roads too. Is there some way to keep the roads wider, the way we can allow parking on both sides? Yeah, I know, we keep saying it meets code, so there is nothing we can do, kind of a thing. There has to be some way to kind of make this slightly better. So when, when we say yes, we feel good in our heart, right? Because like Commissioner Shook was saying, we say yes and then we all go home feeling, ah, that didn't feel right somehow, kind of a thing. How do we, how do we address that?
Maybe that's something you can ask Dave, Dave Ross later on during his presentation. Okay. Craig, Commissioner Shook?
Hey, I, my, my question wasn't so much driven about feeling bad about, about what we're doing. It's, it's, it's the tension between needing seventy-five-hundred more units in an area that already feels, I mean, it feels tight already. And I definitely think that we need the housing. I mean, that's what, I mean, it's obvious. It's just hard to figure out how to do that when nobody wants it right next to them, you know? And, and that's, and that's the struggle, I think, as a commissioner, because you, 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 you hear the city say, hey, we've reviewed this. Because you, 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 you hear the city say, hey, we've reviewed this and it works and it meets the code. And so you want to say, I trust that. And on the other hand, you're listening to the people who might be around the project who are saying, you know, life is going to end as we know it, you know? If, if this project is approved and it's hard to navigate that sometimes. And so I would, that, that's kind of the feedback I was looking for. Not necessarily, hey, make all the roads wider, but it's just, it's a, it's a struggle on our commission. And, but I, I thought the needs analysis was very well thought out. It's, it's, it's gonna, that's a lot of houses that we need to get put into the community. So it's more of a comment than a, than a question. I'll stop now.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson or Commissioner Dick, go ahead.
Commissioner Dick can go first, she raised her hand.
Hi. I, I thought that was a really thoughtful and well-presented presentation. The one thing I noticed and, and people have brought it up is like Jamie, is the senior assisted living, senior housing, which I really didn't see listed. It got everyone but that group of people. And there are a lot of them, people, I'm a senior myself. And who knows, maybe I want that house someday that's affordable and for people who are retired. So I was wondering, how did the senior piece fit into that presentation? Because I really didn't see or read anything that said senior housing, affordable senior housing. And that's my question, where does that come in at for the city to look at areas?
I think, I think Melissa already addressed that to a certain extent about if the city wants to, they can provide incentive, the various incentive, you know, to developers or provide financial assistance to potential buyers in the future if they want to. And I don't think the comprehensive plan is that specific to senior housing in general. So I, I think that's something the city, the city council or the staff would need to look into.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jamie?
My turn. So I just wanted to append a comment on to Commissioner Shook's earlier comments about traffic and the tension between, well, it's really infill projects. They're sort of like, there was a, you know, a factory or a warehouse or whatever that was, you know, moves out and you have a big piece of land and you're building a new neighborhood there. That's different from, you know, taking a one acre, two acre piece of property and then, and then packing it full of new houses that are much denser than the surrounding areas. And yeah, it's just, and I've expressed sort of a similar sentiment of just, it feels a little bit like we're trying to encourage people to preserve wetlands. And, and then so you leave this open spot in one corner of the property, but then you pack the rest of the property full with houses in a way that's not consistent or transitional from, from the surrounding density of the existing neighborhood. And so, and I think that's where some of that tension comes from. It's just what we're, we're urbanizing. But there's kind of like a jump in density between, between the existing neighborhoods and infill projects that, you know, on top of traffic issues and everybody, you know, already dealing with traffic as much as they have to because of driving to work every day and driving home. But, but yeah, there's that, that, there's a tension that is going to come with infill projects versus, versus a new neighborhood. And the, I, I think that the presentation and everything has been, is very, again, very thoughtful. I'm repeating everybody else's comments about, you know, good, great intentions, great, great work. Thank you. But, but there's sort of a, um, there's sort of a way of presenting it that is like, it's a new, you know, here's what a new neighborhood looks like with missing middle type housing. But the sort of addressing how, how that type, new housing type integrates with existing neighborhoods is not as focused on perhaps. And so that, that's my comment. I think generally speaking, this is all, all, all good and we need it and it needs to happen. Yes, sort of ma- making, making this new housing, these new housing types integrate with existing neighborhoods is deserves consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson, your comments.
Sure, a couple, hopefully quick points. I did just want to mention that as far as the, the questions around senior housing, I did just want to point out that in the proposed update to goal 10.1, under the recommended action measures, there is at least one action measure that specifically calls out, including a focus on housing for seniors, housing accessible to people with disabilities and housing for people experiencing homelessness. So there is, there is mention of that in what we're discussing today. I just wanted to point that out. As far as my overall reactions, I, I very much feel that, that tension of, it's great to live in a place where everyone wants to live, but then you worry that once everyone lives here, will it be the same place still? So I, I, I understand that tension that some of the other commissions, commissioners are, are talking about and have referenced, hearing about from the community. At the same time, I think, you know, people are coming here and we need to face that and deal with it in a smart way and a proactive way, or at least as much as we can. And I, I think these amendments are a good thing overall and going in the right direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Robert, you have the last comment because we are 25 minutes over.
I'll make this really quick. I think that a lot of what we're talking about is follow on to this. You know, what we're looking at is additional data. And a lot of what we're worrying about is how things will be executed after that, using this data. I don't think they, I think, I think that this will be useful data to add, the amendments. And, you know, the, the devil is in the details of how we implement in the following years. But, so I'm in support of adopting this as an ancillary document. I think it's very reasonable and we'll continue to get more data as we go forward. That's my thought.
Thank you, well put. So commissioners, do we have a motion in place?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Robert.
Okay, I'll give it a shot.
Before you do that, everybody, please lower your hands, please.
Oh, okay. Thanks, yes. So I hope this wording is correct. I move the planning commission forward because this is going to the city, right? This is a recommendation to the city, not a flat approval by ourselves.
Right, recommendation to city for adoption.
Okay, so I'm moving the planning commission forward, a recommendation of approval to the city council of the comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2021-00002. And I think that's basically it, adoption of any findings contained in that staff report and based on the testimony received.
Thank you. So Commissioner Robert, move a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to city council of application number CPA 2021-00002 and adoption of finding and condition, there's no addition, I'm sorry, adoption of finding in the staff report and based on the testimony received. Do we have a second?
My second.
Commissioner Shook's second, thank you. So I'll give you, so everybody will have fi- five, five second to raise their hand if you approve the motion. So please raise your hand if you approve and leave your hands out, please. Okay, those in favor, please. Please say aye.
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 Thank you. So I see seven hands raised, so it passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, so the motion's passed. So the city council is scheduled to hear this case on May 25th. If the member of public have any question, please contact Skylar Warren. Thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is the final briefing on the River Terrace 2.0. I will put concept plan quotation mark because it's not our traditional concept plan hearing. So again, member of public, if you want to provide your comment about this briefing, please call in at 503-966-4101. Skylar, please go ahead.
Good evening again, President Hu and Commissioners. Again, my name is Skylar Warren. I'm a senior planner in the Department of Community Development. Tonight's second item is the final briefing to the Planning Commission on the River Terrace 2.0 concept plan. You may be wondering why this item is not a legislative hearing. The city cannot plan for areas outside its urban growth boundary. And so the concept plan is not a binding comprehensive plan document, nor is it a land use procedure. Instead, a concept plan is a high-level vision document that is intended to demonstrate that the city has adequately considered all of the factors to ensure that the area can develop in line with the goals and standards of Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan and by extension, the statewide planning goals. So we will be seeking your comments and feedback on the concept plan tonight. However, there is no formal action requested or required. The city council, some background on this. The city council adopted goals in 2019 that directed staff to prepare a concept plan for the city's two remaining urban reserves at the western edge of the city. After receiving a planning and development grant from Metro in late 2019, city staff selected a consultant team led by OTAC, a local planning, engineering and design firm. The project kicked off in summer 2020 in the midst of the COVID pandemic. While this presented numerous challenges to us, the project team has guided the effort efficiently and equitably and completed a concept plan that we believe is aligned with the city's vision and goals. There's a lot to cover here and we're a little over time already. So now I'm going to turn it over, the presentation to Sarah Breakstone of OTAC, who has served as the project lead for the consultant team. Welcome tonight, Sarah.
Thank you, Skylar. Again, I'm Sarah Breakstone, project manager with OTAC and have been leading the consultant team and working closely with Skylar for the last nine months to deliver this concept plan. So very happy to be here tonight to do this briefing. And like Skylar said, we've got a lot to get through. So I am going to share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Thank you. And you're seeing.
Sarah, I'm sorry, before you begin, it's not fair to you, but we ran over quite a bit for the last presentation. So this presentation is scheduled to end by 8:20, but take as much time as you want. But I just want you to keep me in mind that we, we are supposed to stop this in 15 minutes, but I will let you take as much time as you need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will, I, yeah, I'll get through it as quickly as I can. And then of course, we'll take questions and discussion afterwards. So just to confirm, you guys are seeing the full slide, not the, like the notes slides, is that correct?
Correct.
I've got like four different screens happening right here. Okay, great. So to start off, just a quick orientation. I think most of you probably understand this, but a concept plan is really the first step in a series of steps for urbanizing urban reserve areas. So the concept plan identifies at a high level, patterns for land use, transportation, public infrastructure, natural resources. And those concepts that, those patterns get further refined down the line. The concept plan will be submitted to Metro for their consideration. If they approve or accept the concept plan, then this area will be brought into the urban growth boundary. And the next step will be community planning, which is where a lot of the concepts identified in the concept plan really get further defined and further, and more detail is added before development ultimately occurs. Just to orient you, geographically, River Terrace 2.0 is comprised of two urban reserve areas that are at the western edge of the city, River Terrace West and River Terrace South. You can see them here directly adjacent to what we're now calling River Terrace 1.0, which is currently developing. King City to the south, their recently added urban expansion area is just south of River Terrace South across Beef Bend Road. South Cooper Mountain is just north of River Terrace West, here above Schlessery Road. So at the start of the project, we developed, one of our first steps was to develop a project vision for this work. While we were doing that, we realized we really needed to take a step back or a step up and understand our, our focus. And so that's what this focus statement is about. It's really identifying that the overarching themes or the lenses through which we view this work are equity and climate change. I won't read the whole thing to you, but I will read the last sentence because I think it says the most. When we meet the needs of the most vulnerable communities, the health and well-being of all community members improves. Here is our vision statement, probably you've seen this before. Again, I won't read it to you word for word, but I will read the first sentence because I think it says the most. River Terrace 2.0 is a neighborhood for everyone and a complete community. So the, the vision here for River Terrace 2.0 is really a place that offers opportunities for people to live, all kinds of people, all types of households, at all types of income levels. This is a place where people can work as well as live, they can shop, they can eat out, they can recreate, they can do all of the things that they would like to do in their daily lives without having to travel outside of the neighborhood. I will add that in addition to the vision statement, we also created guiding principles for each sort of element of the concept plan that we used to guide our work and help us develop the concept plan alternatives and then also to evaluate them. And I'll bring those up later as we kind of move through the particular elements of the concept plan. I do want to touch on community engagement. We had a very robust community engagement effort as part of this work. We wanted to do community engagement that was inclusive, varied, and to the extent possible, representative of the Tigerd community as a whole and the diversity of its residents. We also did all of our community engagement in virtual settings because of the COVID pandemic. That created some challenges, but I also think created a lot of opportunities. And we learned a lot about how to do community engagement in a virtual setting and do it successfully in, in the way that, that I felt was meaningful for us and for the people who were involved. This is just a quick, high-level summary of some of the things that we did. We kicked it off with a survey where we were asking people, what makes a great neighborhood? So we're just kind of asking some general questions about housing, commercial needs, transportation needs, had a pretty good response. So we're just kind of asking some general questions about housing, commercial needs, transportation needs, had a pretty good response. You can see some of the other activities that we undertook. We had a couple open houses, online open houses, a Spanish language, language focus group. From my perspective, probably the most meaningful engagement we did was with our community advisory committee. We met five times over the nine months that we were doing this work. We had 12 members on our committee, three of whom were native Spanish speakers. And it was just a really great, diverse group of people who really had a lot of passion for Tigerd and lots of thoughts about what could happen in Tigerd and in River Terrace so that they could continue to live there and continue to thrive. So after we did our sort of baseline assessments where our technical consultants were out in the field doing all of their technical analyses, we kind of pulled all of our information together and had a series of synthesis workshops where we tried to understand really what is the framework that we are working within? And what are the elements of that framework that are kind of fixed throughout? And where are the flexibilities? Where are the things that we can play around with? And we developed three concept plan alternatives. You can see them here. They definitely have some similarities. The differences are really around how the commercial centers are organized in relationship to the residential neighborhoods. And I'll just kind of go through them very quickly. The first concept is focused on larger commercial centers that are really at those arterial edges and probably have a focus more on a typical commercial center with some of the big box retail, surface parking. Housing around the commercial centers is somewhat more intense and higher profile and it's sort of transitions out to lower profile housing types as you get away from the commercial centers. Concept B is what we called our Main Street concept. This is where the commercial centers are focused along Main Street corridors. They are internal to the neighborhoods but maintain those strong connections to the arterial edges. Housing in this concept was intended to be a little bit more evenly dispersed in terms of intensity and profile. So there's not as much of a difference between the housing that's around the Main Street corridor and the housing that's at the edges. Concept C is really focused on smaller, more internal neighborhood commercial nodes that do extend out to those arterial edges, but they're really internally focused. Housing is the most intense, highest profile in in character right around those commercial nodes and then transitions out to much more low-profile housing types as you get out to the edges of the study area. Excuse me. So we took those concepts and we vetted them through a number of ways. We talked with our community advisory committee. We talked with city staff. We talked internally as a design team. And we also made them available for comment and input at a, on a online open house. And so we were able to collect quite a bit of sort of preference data from that open house. And as we moved through this evaluation phase, there were really some sort of key themes or key considerations that kind of rose to the top and helped us develop our preliminary, I'm sorry, our preferred alternative. And those considerations were that we really needed to have a larger commercial employment center in River Terrace West near that Schults Ferry arterial edge. There was a clear preference for this Main Street corridor concept, so we wanted to organize our neighborhoods around that concept. There was a need to balance livability and internal focus with those external connections and the visibility and the access that you get from being connected to those arterial edges. We needed to incorporate some flexibility to allow an extension of Tile Flat Road through River Terrace West. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the transportation piece. Neighborhoods throughout River Terrace 2.0 needed to achieve an average of about 20 units per net acre, per developable acre. For River Terrace South, the connection at Beef Bend, it was really important to reflect and complement the planning work that's being done in King City and their and their town center or their planned town center in what I think they're now calling Kingston Terrace. We needed to, of course, make sure that we were meeting the parks level of service standard and maintain some flexibility for how and where that standard is met. And certainly wanted to maximize flexibility for transit and the ability to entice Trimate to extend service to to this area in the future. So those are kind of some of the main drivers. Here's our preferred alternative. In its, in its full glory, I'll get into the, we'll kind of go through it in a little bit more detail, but just to orient you. The purple areas are the commercial centers. This pinkish, orangish, and yellowish colors represent the different neighborhood typologies or housing typologies that we've identified. The green areas are natural open spaces, drainages, and then you can see all of the different trail and street connections throughout. Here's a closer look at River Terrace West. You can see it has two commercial centers. Quite a bit of this yellow housing typology, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. It's called Feathered Edge. And one of the main drivers, I think, for laying out the patterns here in River Terrace West had to do with the need to have that larger commercial center, employment center along Schults Ferry, and then also these drainages that cut through in three different places. Those really shaped the way the way we drew this plan. Here's a closer look at River Terrace South. I think some of the main considerations here were the presence of quite a few wetlands, especially this large significant wetland and this sort of long series of significant wetlands here. That and also the need to really think about how to complement and reflect the town center that's ultimately being planned in Kingston Terrace and think about ways to sort of complement rather than compete with what's happening in King City. So a closer look at housing concepts. As I mentioned, we had these guiding principles that we used throughout the process to guide our work. For housing, we wanted neighborhoods that provided diversity of housing choices, that we can serve the full range of Tigerd's household needs. Neighborhoods should integrate opportunities for both market rate and regulated affordable housing throughout. There was really a desire to make sure that affordable housing options are well-integrated into the neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are designed to think about adjacent natural areas and how they relate to the commercial centers. And neighborhoods are designed to provide that 20 units per acre. So if you recall the different colors, the Main Street on the map is kind of that pinkish color. This is a housing typology that is really intended to work well with the commercial Main Street corridors. The even mix, and it, and it kind of provides a transition between the commercial centers and the other types of neighborhoods in River Terrace 2.0. The even mix is generally a housing typology that's sort of located between the Main Street corridors and the Feathered Edges. And it's more of a mix of many different housing types, different housing forms. And it's not just a, a block-to-block mix, but it's also within the block mix. And so we're really expecting to see here no blocks that are purely row houses and no blocks that are purely cottage clusters, if you will. There's really an intent to have integrated housing forms throughout. The Feathered Edge typology was represented in that yellow color and you'll see it on the concept plan map near the natural edges. And this is really a response to trying to integrate housing at those natural edges and reflect sort of the waviness of those natural edges and provide access to the natural spaces at those edges. So generally speaking, housing forms in this typology are more, are lower in profile, but not necessarily intended to be lower density. In fact, they achieve the same densities as the other housing typologies. A quick look at the commercial concepts, commercial employment centers are guiding principles were really to provide opportunities for business and employment to serve River Terrace residents and some of those people outside of River Terrace with the goal being that residents can meet many of their daily needs without having to travel long distances and hopefully without having to get into a car. So this is a zoom in of River Terrace West. We've got a commercial Main Street corridor along the extension of Mountainside Way up at Schults Ferry Road. That Main Street corridor is roughly six acres and it is surrounded by about 10 acres of an employment district or an employment center. I do want to add that we, Leland Consulting Group prepared a commercial market analysis for this project and identified the ability of this area to support about 30 acres total of commercial employment land. And so we've, we've estimated acreages for this plan, but it's probably worth noting that they're conceptual, like everything in this plan, and likely to shift depending on market factors and also what happens outside of the planning area in King City and in Schults Ferry and to the east in River Terrace 1.0. This is a second commercial corridor that is part of River Terrace West. About four acres of a commercial Main Street corridor intended to be primarily neighborhood-scale commercial uses along like a two or three block segment of the, of the extension of Bull Mountain Road. It's more, excuse me, internal to the neighborhood, but it does have that good connection and visibility from the Roy Rogers Bull Mountain Road intersection. There is one commercial center in River Terrace South. It's about five acres. And again, really trying to think about how to complement and reflect what's happening in King City. And again, a sort of neighborhood-serving commercial center, mix of retail and civic with strong, strong connections to Beef Bend Road and whatever's happening south of there ultimately. So in terms of transportation, our guiding principles were about emphasizing pedestrian and bicycle connections, designing streets for safety and to serve all modes of transportation and connecting to regional facilities and extending existing streets and trails where it's feasible and economically makes sense to do so. This is a close look at River Terrace West and the transportation improvements that were recommended here. Probably the biggest consideration with River Terrace West was the possibility of a Tile Flat Road extension. I hope you guys can see my cursor. Let's see, if I do that, can you see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Tile Flat Road Extension is a project that's identified in the Washington County Urban Reserves Transportation Study, the ERTS study. It's a envisioned to be a three-lane collector that crosses Schults Ferry, comes through this undesignated part of Washington County and through River Terrace West and connecting over here and ultimately down to southwest Bull Mountain Road. This is, like I said, it's part of the ERTS study. For this project, we also wanted to consider an alternative that doesn't include the Tile Flat Road extension and look at both of those. When DKS did their traffic analysis, they did a sensitivity analysis where they both, they looked at operations both with and without the Tile Flat Road extension. So that's where these Framework A and B comes in. Framework A is this mountainside extension serving as the main collector without Tile Flat Road happening here. And Framework B includes Tile Flat Road. So in the analysis, the, there was no clear definitive benefit to the Tile Flat Road extension, but it was also oops, sorry about that. It was also pretty clear that there needs to be a deeper analysis that takes into account probably a wider regional view. And really takes a deeper dive into the trade-offs of that facility in terms of movement of traffic and neighborhood livability for River Terrace West. And I think that that's already something that the city is planning to do as part of the community plan for this work. So there will be more to come on that for sure. Other improvements, Vandermost Road, an extension of, oh, let me see, I'm putting my cursor on the wrong screen. This is an extension of Sabrina Avenue, bringing Southwest Jean Louise Road into the study area to meet up with this north-south collector. Down here is a potential future extension of Mountainside Way south out of the urban growth boundary or out of the study area. This is something that we wanted to explore as part of this concept plan. It was not studied by DKS and it was not included in the cost estimates. Just wanted to make that out. Here's a closer look at River Terrace South. The major improvements recommended here are obviously an extension of River Terrace Boulevard south through the study area down into King City or Kingston Terrace, an extension of southwest Lassich Lane here. Improvements to southwest Beef Bend Road and multiple intersection improvements mostly along Roy Rogers and Beef Bend Road. This also identifies similar to what we did in River Terrace West, a possible realignment of Beef Bend to bring it up this way and across. Again, this was not something that was studied by DKS and it's not part of the cost estimates. It's something that can be further refined in future, future planning projects. We also, of course, looked at trails. I know this map is a little difficult to read, but the idea here is to show potential trail connections. And then these gray circles are the half-mile trail access service areas. And I think that the big takeaway from this map is that there, we're anticipating good overlapping access to trails throughout River Terrace West and South. And connections to some of the existing and planned regional trails in the area. Transit is something that the city is, of course, very interested in, in bringing to River Terrace 2.0. That's one of the reasons that the Main Street corridor concept, that concept B, I think, rose to the top was because it provided the most flexibility for transit options, both an internal option and an external option. And that's kind of what we're looking at here. Option A, which is this red line, is a an approach to transit that actually brings transit into the study area. Nope, sorry. And around Down River Terrace Boulevard and into River Terrace South and actually brings transit along those collector streets and along those neighborhood corridors, commercial corridors. Option B or Approach B is an external pathway that brings transit along the arterial edges without bringing it actually into the planning area. A quick look at parks. Our guiding principles for parks. Community and neighborhood parks should be located throughout evenly distributed and provide a variety of options for residents. Parks should be accessible and connected to commercial centers and to the neighborhoods. And to the extent possible, emphasize natural features like views and tree groves. So here is a look at the parks service areas that were identified for River Terrace West. As you'll see, we didn't specify locations and sizes of specific parks for this project. That'll happen later. What we did was understand how we needed to meet our level of service standard, which is a, an acreage per thousand resident standard. And estimate these service areas, these half-mile and quarter-mile and one-mile service areas to understand how that level of service standard could be met. So here in River Terrace West, we've identified two community parks, four neighborhood parks, and four linear parks that are envisioned to be located near the commercial centers and also along some of the natural resource corridors. In River Terrace South, we identified the need for one community park, two neighborhood parks, and two linear parks. And you can see those circles there. And you can see those circles there. Wanted to give you a quick look at stormwater concepts. You can see that picture from a stormwater facility in River Terrace 1.0. The, the general approach for stormwater management in River Terrace 2.0 is going to be very similar to that that was taken in River Terrace 1.0. That work in River Terrace 1.0 sort of set the stage for a level of a standard and requirements for stormwater treatment that is sort of above and beyond what would typically be required by clean water services. And that approach is really focused on these larger regional facilities that not only manage stormwater, but they also provide some public amenities and some opportunities for some public benefits. So you'll see in River Terrace West, there are some, we've identified preliminarily locations and sizes for regional stormwater facilities. In River Terrace South, the same thing. In River Terrace South, there are opportunities to integrate stormwater management with wetlands that can be expanded and enhanced to also serve a stormwater function. So of course, part of the work is looking at and thinking about implementation strategies. So how can we make this all happen? Part of that is identifying high level infrastructure costs, which our technical consultants did for water service, sanitary sewer, stormwater, parks, trails and transportation. And we've estimated a total cost for public infrastructure at around $161 million. Leland Consulting Group prepared a preliminary funding strategy for this project that identified different ways that the different, I'm sorry, the different public infrastructure elements could potentially be funded. I won't go into detail here, but it's kind of the usual combination of private development, constructing, improvements, using existing and potentially new or revised system development charges, potentially supplemental fees and some grants. And there's a much more detailed report available if anybody's interested. And because this project was so driven by the need for housing and our approach to housing in River Terrace 2.0 is somewhat new and unusual for a concept plan, we really wanted to take a bit of a deeper dive and identify some specific strategies around housing, how to encourage this missing middle type of development and how to encourage regulated, regulated affordable housing and how to integrate those types of housing in all, throughout all of River Terrace 2.0. And so we pulled from a couple of sources, the housing needs analysis that you just heard about, prepared by Mosaic, had a lot of good recommendations for housing strategies. And Leland Consulting Group also prepared an Affordable Housing Strategies Memo for us that we were able to pull from. And that again is a more detailed report that is available for people to look at if they're interested. And I think that that is it. So I will, I think, stop sharing my screen and we can take questions. Thank you. I know that was a lot. And I didn't come anywhere close to 8:15, I'm sorry.
No problem. Appreciate your effort though, Sarah. Thank you. So Commissioner K7, you have a comments or a question? Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm K7. Thank you, Sarah. That was a splendid presentation, very well done. And you did it in very quick order, so very nicely done, very articulate. Okay, so I had a curiosity question more than anything. You showed us where some of the commercial elements are going to be in the new development, proposed development. Now, I see there is a lot of development going on on the Beaverton side near tile flat, et cetera. Are there similar commercial setups there coming up? And will we?
Last part of your question froze up a little bit, I think.
Yeah, I think K7 is frozen up.
Okay, well, I think I understood the question. Yeah, we certainly looked at what's happening in South Cooper Mountain, which is just north of River Terrace West, and also, of course, what's happening in King City to the south and what's happening, there is a small town center planned in River Terrace 1.0. So we had that in mind as we were planning our commercial centers. And up along Schultz Ferry Road, what they're planning in South Cooper Mountain is a pretty small Main Street commercial center. And the idea with the larger commercial employment center planned for River Terrace West is that it could sort of provide a suite of complementary uses to what's happening in South Cooper Mountain, which I think is primarily retail and civic and maybe a little bit of office. So yeah, we, as we were planning these commercial areas, we were certainly thinking about what's happening outside of our study area and trying to think about ways that we could complement what's happening and not directly compete. Hopefully that answers.
I'm not sure if he's on, but he can watch the replay of this video later. Thank you. Commissioner, we'll have time, we'll have time for one more quick question or comment if you have any. Okay, I'm sure, I don't see any. I'm sure if you have any more questions, you can contact Skylar. I'm sure he will be happy to guide you through this. Okay, so, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Skylar, for your presentation.
I believe we do have one comment, a caller.
Oh, we do? Okay, good, great. Thank you for reminding me of that, Kealan.
Yes, we do have one caller when you're ready for them.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. So caller, when you get on the line, please clearly state your name and address and spell your last name, please. And you have three minutes after you clearly state your name and address. Please go ahead.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is Jay Raj Singh. I live on 14297 Southwest 169th Avenue, Tigard, Oregon 97224. My name is Jay Raj and I currently live in Tigard, the River Terrace community in the new Roche Bridge development. I'm also a part of the River Terrace Community Advisory Committee and have been providing input to the city of Tigard. I want to thank the city of Tigard and its partners for starting a community engagement process. There are many reasons I moved to Tigard, but one of the main reasons I moved here is to be a part of a compassionate faith-based community I connect with, and that is the Punjabi Sikh community, primarily comprised of immigrants and families from northern India and Pakistan. This faith community has a community center, place of worship and refuge known as the Sikh Center of Oregon, which is on the west side of southwest Satsuma Ave, south of southwest Schultz Ferry Road, where the employment center is currently being proposed. The community center serves hundreds of community members across the state of Oregon, but particularly our Punjabi Sikh community in Washington County. I truly appreciate the efforts that the city of Tigard and their partners are doing, but I want to emphasize that this region has a history of destabilizing and displacing communities of color. As this plan continues to move forward, there needs to be a concerted effort to meet my community where they are at. The Sikh Center of Oregon is an anchor for many vulnerable immigrants, South Asians and South Asian Americans. How can the city of Tigard and its partners work with the Sikh community so they can maintain their critical presence in the new River Terrace 2.0 development instead of having them look for another location? With telecommuting and remote work now more universal and normal, the need for an employment center is outdated. I encourage you all to truly make this neighborhood for everyone by investing much more heavily on community outreach and engagement and by centering communities that go, that often go unheard and who already reside on that land. Thank you for listening and your consideration.
Thank you. Before you leave, Doreen, do you have the caller's last name and first name?
Can you spell your name? Is it J Raj?
Yeah, it's J A I R A J, that's first name, and last name is Singh, S I N G H.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave, commissioners, do we have, do you have any questions for the caller? I see none. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
So Skylar or Sarah, do you want to, do you have any comments to the caller or?
I guess I don't, you know, I, we have endeavored to include as many members of our community as we possibly can on a committee that is only made up of 12 members. We certainly take the concerns of any existing property owners or community members in the area very seriously and will continue to work with Jay Raj as a member of the Community Advisory Committee and work to address any concerns that communities, speaking on behalf of, may have.
Thank you. Kealan, do we have any more callers on the line?
There are no more callers.
All right, thank you. Thank you again, Skylar. Thank you again, Sarah. Appreciate your presentation. Have a nice evening. All right, so let's move on to our next item. It's a briefing, Transportation System Plan Update. Will be presented by our senior transportation planner, Dave Roth.
Hey, President Hu, can I start to interrupt? This is K7. I just wanted to apologize to Skylar and Sarah. Somehow we had a glitch at the house and then the power went off and came back on. That's why I dropped in the middle of asking the question. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. As I mentioned, then you can, you can watch the re broadcast of this meeting and get their answers, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hello again, Dave. Please go ahead.
Good evening, President Hu and Planning Commissioners. I'm Dave Roth and I'm Tigard Senior Transportation Planner. I have with me tonight Judith Gray, who is our project manager on the consultant side for the Transportation System Plan. So I just want to acknowledge quickly that we're a little over time. And so I think what I'll propose to do is that Judith and I will, will try to get through our presentation as quickly as possible. And I'll also offer up that I'm happy to return to another meeting to give a fuller presentation before we get into the adoption process, which we'll, we'll talk about tonight a little bit more. So later this spring. So how does that sound to folks?
I appreciate that. That sounds very good. Thank you.
Okay, good. I just want to be respectful of people's time. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Give me one second here. Okay. There we go. All right, so I'm back. I last visited the Planning Commission back in December of 2020. And at that point, I provided an update on our Transportation System Plan to the group. So tonight, we're here to give you a briefing, a little bit later, to give you again, an overview of the project and to provide some updates as we've been making some good progress. So tonight, we'll, we'll give you a sense of what's new in the Transportation System Plan Update. We'll go through the goals and policies that we've developed for the new plan. Judith will talk about the evaluation framework that we're using for new future projects and programs. And she'll also talk a bit more about the network approach for transit and active transportation. And then I'll, I'll go through our next steps quickly. So first off, I want to give a sense of where we are in the overall project schedule. So you can see on the dashed line that we're right here in the middle of April, obviously. We are in between public engagement phases. So we completed our first phase of community engagement last winter. And that's about the time I visited you and provided a briefing on what we were up to then. The triangles are our advisory committees. So we have a technical advisory committee and a community advisory committee, of which two Planning Commission members sit on. So we'll be entering our second phase of public engagement later this spring. We plan on kicking that off with a transportation open house, an event that we've done over the last couple of years at the city of Tigard. That's gotten a lot of great community feedback. And we'll be doing this online, of course, because of the pandemic restrictions. So we're, we're sort of in the middle of the project right now. And you can see the different deliverables, project elements on the side here. I think the piece to emphasize with the Planning Commission is that we will be back to present a, an overview of the actual draft plan, which we will be asking you to recommend for adoption for the city council. So that'll happen in the fall. So just the basics here on what a Transportation System Plan is. So our work and these transportation system plans in general in Oregon are guided by Goal 12, which is, which basically requires us to provide and encourage a safe and economic transportation system that avoids overreliance on any single mode. You'll, you'll know that our current Transportation System Plan is the Chapter 12, chapter of the comprehensive plan. So what we'll be doing with the TSP here is, once it's adopted, it will, the new plan will make up that chapter of our comprehensive plan for the city of Tigard. Since the current plan was adopted, a lot has changed. We've seen a lot of growth in the community. And recently, in the last couple of years, we've seen some very significant changes. And it goes without saying that the pandemic has really thrown a wrench in our transportation system, particularly for traffic volumes, which have dropped and have not, not yet recovered from the drop last year. And then also particularly for transit usage, which is, which has significantly dropped as well. We have seen an increase in active transportation since the pandemic began. So anyway, quickly, I just want to go through where we're at with our goals for this project. And it's, it's worth noting that the goals are foundational or the strategic plan for the city of Tigard was foundational in setting up our goals and policies. So we are striving to provide a safe and comfortable and connected transportation system, supporting environmental and community health, improving quality of life for all, creating livable neighborhoods, supporting economic vibrancy and making the most of transportation resources. I think some of the earlier conversation tonight regarding, you know, increasing density around housing and how that plays into the transportation system is exactly what we're trying to address with, with this plan. So one more thing I wanted to say on this slide before I move on is that the, the goals that we've created here were vetted with the public during that first phase of engagement. And we had good support across the board for the goals that you see here that was demonstrated from our online survey for the community. So I'm going to hand it over to Judith now, who's going to walk us through the next part of the presentation.
Hi, everybody. Judith Gray, Fair and Pierce. And I just, first of all, thank you for your time tonight. I want to just also mention that when those goals were developed, they were really done with, out of a priorities workshop that was convened with city staff. And it was quite impressive, the participation that Dave was able to convene. We had the city manager and we had, I think, almost every department head, as well as a whole lot of staff. So I think there were maybe 25 people participating. It was in that workshop that it was made clear, not by the consultants, but by the city staff, that it needed to support that strategic vision. And that's really one of the big differences. And that's really one of the big differences that has happened in the past 10 years or past 11 years since the earlier TSP was done, which is real clarity on the part of the city about what kind of community and how you want to be and how you're going to make that happen. So taking those goals, those updated goals and priorities, we developed an evaluation framework that looks at individual projects or programs, but also I'm going to talk a little bit about how it's a bundle of investments. Because the TSP is intended to be so broad and very long term and it is also somewhat flexible. So I like to look at the evaluation of individual projects, but also making sure that we're covering a wide range of needs and geographies, that sort of thing. They've already mentioned that they need to be connecting to, connecting transportation plans to existing, to expected growth. It's also important that we coordinate with other agencies. So in addition to the CAC, we also have a technical advisory committee with Washington County and ODOT and Beaverton and several other neighboring agencies, TriMed and Metro. But I think that even though there are those legal requirements out of the transportation planning rule, it is an opportunity to advance the local priorities and we don't want to lose sight of that. Next slide, please. Next. This matrix. Again, I'm trying to capture this bundle of investments concept. We did a test run of a few projects and so the projects A through E actually have names. Those are projects you would probably recognize. But what I wanted to show was that when we looked at Goals 1 through 6, we assigned numeric values to certain test questions. So for example, Goal 1, we asked, does the project address a location with a history of fatal or severe injury, severe injury collisions? Does it create a new connection for active transportation? Does it improve safe access to school? So each of these goals has some test questions like that and there's the numeric scores assigned, so then projects are evaluated accordingly. Basically, everything that you see here intuitively, the green scores are the ones that had the high, the green squares are the, the projects that had the highest score. The red had the lowest. But one of the reasons that we're really going to emphasize the bundle is because the low score doesn't necessarily mean it's bad. That's the problem with doing this kind of transportation plan is that there's so many good ideas. So we don't want to suggest that something is a bad idea or it's going to get tossed. That is not the way. But this is how we are approaching the overall analysis to make sure that we are capturing the goals, the updated goals of the community. Next, please. So to illustrate, going back to the 2010 TSP. We have projects distributed by mode. We had bicycle, pedestrian, multi-use, et cetera, projects like that. Altogether, $620 million dollars worth of projects were included. That was not what was built. I think at that time, the estimated revenue was something like $53 million. But see what I mean? There's a lot of good ideas. And with the TSP, it is possible to put out more than you're going to be able to do and then respond to opportunities or priorities. What's important here is to notice that you have a lot of different modal projects. Maybe just for the sake of illustration, roads accounted for about 50% if you were to just list the number of projects, but they're also very expensive. So it was like the 90% of the total costs. I like to look at things with that kind of distribution to make sure we're covering all the different modes. Next, please. Another way to distribute or to, to think about the distribution of this bundle of investments is the scale. In the 2010 TSP, there are projects as small as $10,000 for share-o markings. And up to 60 million, we, we identified $60 million in intersection projects on Pacific Highway. You do want that kind of a range, so just going through and scoring based on performance is important. But you also want to make sure you have things that you can act on with different opportunities that may come up. Some things big, some things requiring multiple agencies, and some things that you can take action on immediately or in response. Next, please. Geographic distribution. It's important. I, I think that if we were to do the numeric evaluation, we are likely to see a pretty good distribution throughout the city. But you certainly want to be sure of that and you want to make sure that you are covering the city in, in a reasonable way. And that if you have priorities for certain communities that have been under-invested in or with a high proportion of lower-income households or other environmental justice populations and also areas with safety issues. So you want to be able to look geographically at where, where investments are being planned. And of course, with land use goals. The City of Tigerd has a lot of different planning activities and so we want to also make sure that we can attach invest, planned investments that support those land use and community development goals. So here are just, again, I'm summarizing some of the ways that you want to look at not an individual project, but a whole bundle of future investments for timeframe, scale, multimodal, geographic distribution, achieving your land use goals, but always trying to take that equity lens throughout is something that I know is really important to the City of Tigerd and as a profession, something we're trying to do better. One important thing to know is that this is an update to the 2010 TSP and I think actually since it was adopted in 2010, there have been at least three amendments I can think of. There was a connectivity plan around 2011 or 12. Then River Terrace, I think in 2014, the Tiger Triangle had an amendment in 2017 or 18, around that timeframe. It's a little bit confusing and there may have been others that I'm not aware of. So these things, you know, do get updated. But overall, the 2010 TSP really focused on roadways. And since that time, a lot of the projects have been developed. There's still congestion. But there really has been quite a lot of investment in roadways. So many of the projects, though, that are listed from the 2010 TSP will still remain. Some will be refined. But for the most part, a lot of them are still good projects. They just haven't been done yet. So that'll be updated. But what will be substantially different is that the city asked, including from the beginning of the request for proposals, for a substantial increase in the walking and biking elements. Because that was really almost just like a map back in 2010. And so it is a good opportunity to expand those elements, expand how we treat transit and presume that the roadway system is the plan for it is pretty good, needing some review and update. Next, please. Here's a map of the functional, functional classification for the city's roadway system, which you probably have seen before. You know, but the, the different classifications of roads really describe the function of the road in terms of volume and distance traveled as intended. So that's what that map is for and we do try to create a good system-wide plan with good connectivity and through, continuous through routes. But in general, as we go through the list of projects that were identified before, we will be removing the ones that were completed. Some will need to be modified. We know that Hall Boulevard is under consideration for jurisdictional transfer and we want to be able to contemplate the implications for design and operations. Durham Road has been identified as a five-lane cross-section in the current TSP. And for several very good reasons, the city's asked us to consider the viability of that and what the alternatives might be, what the implications and alternative treatments would be. There are a lot of issues around Upper Boones, Durham Road, I-5 interchange area. That is coming from, I hear it from commuters, but also other agencies. So that is something for the city to be engaged in and identifying priorities and necessary outcomes for that. Railroad crossings, Highway 217 crossings, there were a few included in the 2010 TSP. We may be modifying or removing those and may add some. They're very, they're very expensive, but sometimes it's really helpful to just sort of identify where you think there's an opportunity for a connection and that might become the path forward just to begin to really do due diligence and additional planning. Next, please. For transit, well, one of the challenges, of course, for Tigerd is that Tigerd does not, is not a transit service provider and like most communities in, in this region. A lot, so there, there is a network of, you know, we've got the existing transit routes. And then everything that you see there in pink, the pinkish color, those are places that are really not getting any service and this is something that we heard just now about River Terrace, but I'm sure it's something that you guys have heard about before. There are existing unplanned stations and service routes and also land uses. So the Tiger Triangle, Washington Square Regional Center, downtown, all those areas that are being planned for land uses that can be related and should be related to the overall transit strategy. Next, please. So the types of projects typically have been where a city can really play an effective role is in making sure that the connections to transit are good, are safe and inviting and comfortable. The access to transit, that's in the city's realm. But there are also projects that improve operations that the city can also do. Hopefully with good cooperation with TriMed and I think, and we've already begun to establish that. For example, if there are places where we know that transit is being delayed because of traffic operations, there may be ways to improve the traffic signal so that it will give priority to transit service. So there are these kinds of strategies that improve existing operations. And then strategies to support new transit service. That could be through TriMed by working with TriMed, by agreeing to some shared investments for pedestrian or transit stop amenities, as well as partnering with another service provider to develop some more demand-responsive type service for those other lower-density areas. So we're trying to cover a little bit broader range of strategies for transit. This safety act, this came out of the Safety Action Plan. I don't know if you had a presentation of this when it was done in 2019. It's kind of out of place here, except that it's super important. It's pretty, to me. I, I think it's important. I think Dave thinks it's important. The Safety Action Plan identified that in the City of Tigerd, this, this is a table that simply summarizes some of the factors related to fatal and severe injury crashes in the City of Tigerd. And those factors are, you know, roadway departures, intersections, speeding, alcohol use. So you see the, the attributes there and they don't add up to 100 because sometimes there are multiple factors involved, pedestrian and an intersection, for example. So we've got the percentage of times those factors were involved for Tigerd, for the region, ODOT Region 1, which is generally very similar to the metro region, and then statewide. And what I think is very important here is that pedestrian and bicycle fatal and severe crashes are disproportionately high in the City of Tigerd. And we also learned from the TSAP that Highway 99W in particular, especially right around the triangle and downtown area, has had a number of fatalities. So while we talk about the rest of the network plan, this is something that's always part of the thought process about anything to identify, anything to resolve this through both providing alternative routes or improvements to where those facilities are. Next, please. Dave, were you going to talk about the demand analysis part?
I think, I think you were, but.
I'm happy to. I'll do that. We're working with Alta Planning on the active transportation element and so for that purpose, there is, the city does have very, very impressive GIS data. I don't know if you know that Tigerd's GIS data is better than most cities. So something to be aware of. And that shows where there are facilities and where there are gaps, but that can be coupled by looking at where the demand is. This is a heat map that Alta produced and it shows where the demand is highest. And we also would want to relate the identification of future investments to land uses, planned and existing. To areas, you know, priority locations like schools, related to the Safe Rest to School Program. And then critical gaps and barriers. There's also the trail system. And while there is, that is done in a separate plan, it's very important that we include the trail system because it really emphasizes the fact that the trail system is not just for recreational purposes, it is part of the transportation system as well. Next. This is the bicycle network strategy. So this is using that same demand heat map. And then it shows the level of stress along these routes. So level of stress, a level of traffic stress, LTS. Basically, well, it's very intuitive, the name, and it is an indication of the conditions that are experienced by the bicyclist relative to traffic speeds, traffic volumes, the spacing of any, any kind of barrier. So something like a separated bike way would have a much higher, a green line would be a better condition. Whereas a red line means it's pretty stressful and it's, I think you probably know, 99W scores a four. It's a red line because it's a pretty tense, pretty stressful environment. Not everybody is comfortable doing that. So this is something that we can use then to try to make sure that we're either improving facilities on these roads or identifying an alternative parallel route. And sometimes in a city that's built out, as Tigerd is largely built out, it's very difficult to find additional right-of-way. Well, there is no additional right-of-way unless you take it from the property owner. So it's very, very challenging. And this comes up with auto trips, bikes, landscaping, sidewalks. So so one of the strategies that we'll be looking at is ways that we're, any, any opportunities we can find to look for a parallel path that provides that same kind of general connection. There, to you.
Thanks, Judith. I'm doing pretty well on time, I think. So I'm going to go through our next step. So Judith walked us through the evaluation criteria tool that we're using to test different projects out. So that evaluation is happening right now. Our next community and advisory committee and technical advisory committee meetings are going to be occurring. The next one will be in May and then after that will be likely in July as we're wrapping up the next phase of engagement. As I mentioned before, the next phase of engagement will kick off in late May with the next Tigerd. I think it's Let's Talk Transportation Open House. We've done those for the last couple of years and have been great public engagement opportunities. So what we'll be bringing to the community at that point are some of these active transportation network mac, network, neck, work maps. And then also, I believe that we'll have some of the evaluation, evaluated projects likely ready during that phase to, to bring out to the public to, to share and get feedback on. The expected adoption process will be this fall and we will come back to the Planning Commission with the draft plan in the fall and we will share that with you and then seek your recommendation for adoption that we can then take to city council when we bring the, the plan forward to them for adoption. So that's our, our briefing for tonight. I think I'd offer up some time if people want to stick around for Q and A. We're happy to answer some questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Judith. Judith, you look like you're in another time zone. Anyway. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Dave or Judith? Commissioner Miranda, please go ahead.
Hello, here I come. Oh. Pardon me. I had a comment and a question. My comment is just to say it was great that the City of Tigerd has chosen a consultant who has breadth and depth of understanding of our previous transportation plan and its updates. So I appreciate that. And then my question is, on the heat maps, the parks are where the bicycle and pedestrian composite score is high and just briefly explain that to me and it's just curiosity. Thank you.
Was the question that, that it did not show up on the parks or that it did?
Oh, that Dirksen and Woodard Park were like a really big hotspot and I was like, what's, why is that so hot?
You know, I have to just tell you, I, I don't know. Because I was also surprised by some of the things that I was shown. Other people weren't. I actually said, is that right? Is Washington Square Regional Center really the hot demand area for active transportation and suit, I, but then I talked to Susan Shanks and she said, oh, certainly. So I can't tell you, I'm sorry. And I'll, I'll just tell you that our subconsultant did that heat map and I don't know how to do that. But what's important is if you think that, if you think that there's something missing, we don't have to be held hostage to that map. If you think that there's something in error or something that's missing, something that you would have expected to see, we would want that input because that's going to be more important as we go forward in identifying strategies. But isn't it kind of intuitive that a park would have a lot of demand?
I think it's also the proximity to schools that's driving that location as well. So that might play a factor into it. And I think it's worthwhile. I can go back to Alta team and find out what was driving. Like, why is that spot so red? That's a good question, right there around Dirksen.
I bet Dave's right, though. I bet it is the schools right around there.
And then my, I came up with another question. With our Washington Center plan that's just come up, there's a lot of interest and feedback about options for more transportation across two seventeen. And would that integrate with this plan in any way?
That's a great question and, and I'm glad you brought it up. So this is something I'm really excited about is I've been coordinating very closely with Susan Shanks. And, and her project team on the Washington Square Regional Center Plan Update. And one of the reasons I'm excited is because the, the TSP in itself is kind of the thirty thousand-foot view of the overall transportation system. And we just don't have enough resources or time to dive into a lot of specific areas. And so I'm able to leverage a lot of the work that Susan's team is doing in the Washington Square Regional Center that then can feed into the TSP. And, and the way the timing is working right now is it's, it's really aligning well. So we're getting a lot of great knowledge and feedback from. The Washington Square project that will funnel into the TSP. So great question. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any more questions or comments for Dave or Judith? Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead.
Hi, just very simply, I'm amazed at the rate of pedestrian and bicycles in intersections. Getting killed off compared to everywhere else. It's, boggles the imagination. Because I would suspect these are not high-speed, I mean, speed's not an issue, intoxication is not an issue. Do you know what sets us off so far?
I mean, one of the factors that plays into that is just there, there's an increased volume of pedestrians at intersections because that's a place to cross. So that's one of the drivers. But I think one of the things that I, I would suggest, and we can do this as a follow-up, is we can. We should share the Transportation Safety Action Plan with the Planning Commission. I, I don't think we ever briefed the Planning Commission on that plan. And it did really have some interesting findings that can, that are helping direct some of the, the project and program priorities for the TSP. So some great insights in there. We can send a link. It is on the Tigard website. So if you want to learn more about the types of crashes that are happening and where they're happening, it's a really good resource.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Yeah, it makes sense. They would cross at intersections, but then they would do that everywhere.
Right. I will say that it was striking to me how much of it was concentrated along ninety-nine W.
Yes.
Right around the triangle. And that, it's a little less surprising, right? Because it's not a very hospitable environment. And there's a lot of activity. And so a lot of people are just going to be crossing. And there's a lot of gaps there. So that is definitely a safety priority area. I think that if it wasn't for that density of incidents in that section. It would be much more like the rest of the state or the region.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions or comments, so I guess that's it. Thank you so much, Dave. Thank you so much, Judith. I will look forward to your further updates.
Thank you.
All right. So next item on agenda is other business. Tom.
Well, good evening, commissioners. I think, I don't really have any other business and I think that's probably good tonight since, again, we're late. It's just, you know, it's just been very busy suddenly from going from skipping meetings where suddenly, you know, have really full agendas and things are, are, are taking a lot of time. And we have another meeting on May third and there's two hour-long agenda items on that, for that meeting. Dave and I were looking for potential, you know, if you wanted to, you know, bump him tonight to another night. We were looking for other options and that one wasn't an option. So I'm glad they were able to get their briefing in tonight. And probably have him back, looking at his schedule maybe around the July time period, possibly August, so we can get. Get you a briefing before the actual. Hearings and things start. So we'll get some more input from you. Other than that, like I said, the schedule ahead, we've got plenty of projects and activity coming your way. Additional. Positive additional cases as well as more legislative actions.
All right. So how, how is the time slot schedule on our agenda? Because a couple of times, it seems like we don't, we didn't have enough time for the particular hearing or presentation. So if, if we do need more time, that's fine, but I would prefer that the two-time, true timeframes reflected on agenda. So we don't feel like we're rushed or behind, so.
Well, I ask my project managers and the folks who are doing the presentations to give me an estimate, their estimate of how long they think they're going to take to do the presentation. So, and we can get a little crosswise sometimes if the staff, the Tigard staff person has consultants or others who are doing part of the presentation. You start to lose a little bit more control over the timeline of the delivery. But I will definitely talk to them about getting some more realistic estimates of how long they're going to be.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right. Anything else? Nope.
And we'll, we will, I will reaffirm that we will get that traffic safety study, the link to that out to you.
Okay. Asha, do you have something quick? Go ahead.
Yes, just if I have like a bunch of questions, do I bring them up in a meeting? Or do I, can I set up a time to ask all these questions? I mean, I'm assuming the best one would be to just like list them all in an email. Who do I send it to? Things like, how do you use Laserfish?
Tom will be a good person.
These are, these are not project or presentation-specific questions. These are just other questions. Yeah, just put them in, put them in a list and send me an email.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, everybody. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Doring. Thank you, commissioners. Have a good night and see you. See you in next time. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.